Okay. And it'll be held in this room at 5:30 on the 17th by the Board of County Commissioners. After the Commission holds a public hearing unless the application is tabled or withdrawn. Tonight, everyone will have an opportunity to address the Commission. First, those in favor of the application may address the Commission. Then, those opposed to the application may address the Commission. Finally, the applicant may give a brief rebuttal. When the Chair recognizes you, please come to the podium. State your name and address clearly, because our minutes are being recorded. Hopefully, there's no dissension tonight. I won't go on with the rest of this dialogue. With that, I'd ask for a motion on the minutes of the last meeting, please. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? A second. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes? If not, all in favor of those minutes of the last meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. With that, I'll open the public hearing for the first item, which is a CUP 20-9, a request to allow storage of up to 15 collector cars on 120 acres of land in a portion of the northwest, 28 by 35 by 82, and northeast, 29 by 35 by 82. Address of the parcel is 19,684 West Highway. That's 2026. With that, I'd ask for the staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, CUP 20-9 is a conditional use permit request, an application by Robert Crowe. Request and location. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the storage up to 15 collector cars. The applicant owns 120 acres approximately 13 miles west of the airport. So, this is right at the crest of the hill as we're headed out west to town. This is the crest of the hill before Goldeneye Reservoir. Just above, folks have referred to as the Old Stone Ranch is down there at the bottom. You just crest the hill. There is a cell tower that this body approved on the south side of the road. This would be on the north side of the road. All zoning is RAM. Here, this is the highlighted parcel shown on here. Again, we're beyond Bucknam Road. We're just cresting the hill is where this is. There's a road there that takes off to the, I'll call it the right, is Pedro's Pass. Here's an aerial. You can see the intersection. You can see his home some distance back off of the highway. And what he's proposing is a screening plan to contain a 30 by 30 area to store these automobiles in. It's a screening plan that's comprised of, there's some truck shells and some fencing, and staff believes that will shield the view of those automobiles. There's also been a fair amount of cleanup he's done on this property over the years. There was, as you can see in here, there was quite a bit more stuff initially on the property, but he has worked at cleaning up and organizing that in orderly fashion. This is looking at the Crowe property from the highway. This is right where you turn off there. Pedro's Pass is headed to your right. Straight in front of us would be his property. This is kind of the rear behind where he is going to store these automobiles. There's, he's planting the fence there on both sides. I believe in your packet, that's a solid wood fence, a six-foot solid wood fence. This is looking north from the storage location. So, this is behind, behind the cars, looking, looking off to the north, looking toward Bucknam Road. This is looking west from the back of the property. So, now, we're looking toward Goldeneye entrance and west there. Collector car additional showings. The applicant must prove a screening plan that has been approved by the Development Department. The applicant plans to install a solid fence around the storage area and utilize the existing storage containers for screening. The applicant must demonstrate there is sufficient acreage to be covered by the collector car permit. The applicant owns 120 acres. That's above the threshold. The Board shall determine the maximum number of collector cars that may be stored on the property uncovered by this permit. The applicant has requested up to 15 cars. Conditional use permit criteria. This is the same CUP criteria we use for all conditional use permits. One, well, granting the CUP contribute to an overburden of county services. Staffs propose finding the fact. The storage of vehicles will not contribute to an overburden of county services. The applicant does not require county services for this CUP. The Neutrona County Fire Marshal did not have any concerns with this application. So, we showed this application to the Neutrona County Fire Marshal, and he did not have concerns. Well, granting the CUP cause undue traffic, parking, population density, or environmental problems. Staffs propose finding the fact. The storage of vehicles will not cause undue traffic, parking, or population densities. The applicant has drained all the fluids and will not cause environmental problems. As consistent with other collector car applications, that was part of negotiations staff had with the applicant, that they would drain the fluids out of there so that we didn't have leaking, leaking fluids. Well, granting the CUP impair the use of adjacent property or alter the character of the neighborhood. Staffs propose finding the fact. The approved permit will not impair the adjacent properties or alter the character of the neighborhood. The applicant owns 120 acres of land and will store the vehicles behind his home in a fenced-in area. Will granting the CUP detrimentally affect the public health, safety, and welfare or nullify the intent of the development plan or zoning resolution? Staffs propose finding the fact. Approval of the CUP will not detrimentally affect the public health, safety, and welfare or nullify the intent of the development plan. With an approved CUP, the storage of the vehicles will be compliant with the Development Department. Public comment. To date, Neutrona County Development Department has received no comments on this agenda item. Staff sent out notices to five neighbors within one-quarter mile. Proposed motion. Staff proposes a motion and vote by the Planning Commission to recommend approval of the requested agenda item by the Board of County Commissioners. Staff also recommends the Planning Commission incorporate by reference all findings of fact set forth in the staff report and this public meeting. If I could recap just a little bit, in the RAM zoning district, once you have five unlicensed, unoperable vehicles, you're considered a nuisance. And so, you can, the other way to say that is you can have up to four without violating any of the rules. Mr. Crowe would like to store up to 15. So, that is what his options are either to get a collector car storage or build a building large enough that he could store the vehicles in a building. Or, I suppose, another option would be to license and make sure they're all operable, that many vehicles. So, Mr. Crowe has come in and gave us an application. He's got a screening plan that appears to be sufficient for the request. We haven't had any comments from the neighbors, and staff's recommending approval. With that, I'd answer any questions the Commission may have.
I have a favor before we get into the question and answer. Would you, because I've set through the big hassle here a few years ago on collector cars, could I ask you to read the definition of collector car out of the zoning book, please?
Collector cars is any operable or unlicensed vehicle which was previously licensed for highway use, including parts cars having historical or economic appeal to the individual accumulating the cars in which they are stored and maintained in a manner which emphasizes preservation of the cars and prevents or minimizes their physical deterioration. So, a couple of key things that I believe, Mr. Chairman, you're trying to point out is, one, they have to have economic appeal to the individual accumulating them. Two, we're talking about storing them and maintaining them in a manner which emphasizes preservation of the car and prevents or minimizes their physical degradation. So, this is not a geist for getting a salvage, salvage yard permit. This is an individual who wishes to keep certain cars that are important to them, and they will need to maintain them in a manner that minimizes their degradation.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner? Matt?
Yeah, I just have one question. So, once somebody gets a conditional use permit, is there like an ongoing process where somebody goes out there and checks to make sure that they're doing it the way you called you? Or is it based on another neighbor making a complaint in regards to it not being done?
So, staff does periodically go through our conditional use permits, and we go check them to make sure that if there was any conditions associated with that conditional use permit, that it is continued. Some conditions that have previously been put on collector cars would include only valid for the owner that has currently applied. Conditional use permits typically carry with the land. So, there's, while Mr. Crowe may be going to store cars in a certain fashion, there's little guarantee that the next guy may be going to approach it the same way. So, one of the conditions that historically has been put on is it's only for that current owner. A condition would be they need to maintain the fencing or maintain the screening would be a better way to word that. Maintain the screening in a, in a manner that screens the automobiles. Those would be a couple of conditions that staff may further recommend.
Mr. Chairman, Jason, when I was out there, there was a big pile of what appeared to be wood. I didn't get that close. Looked like something had been torn down or just maybe a junk pile or anything. Did you guys see that, or did you address that with, with them?
Mr. Crowe is here, and we could have him answer that. I know he'd been cleaning. I'm sure he'd like to get a burn permit. However, with it being a little dry, we'll have to, have to wait till wetter days. And maybe Mr. Crowe can speak to that when he gets up to speak for the item.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Is that it, Bob?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Jason. With that, I'll open the public hearing on this agenda item. So, anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone here? Yep. Come on up here. State your name and address for us, please.
It's Rob Crowe, 19684 West Highway, 2026.
Thank you.
And, yeah, I've, I've just always been into cars since I was a kid. That's, I've always owned cars. Most of the cars I have are collector cars worth, worth amount of money. I have built 30 by 70 garage, and I pretty much have that full. And I have plans on building a shop eventually. It's just pricey, you know? And so, the pile of wood, we had four mobile homes down there that I had to demolish and get out of there. And that's the actual wood part. And I'm, we are planning on burning that, like through the winter and stuff for heat for our family. And so, you know, I, I can probably figure out a way to get it back behind so it's not so obvious right there. But, but we're going to use it.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
You bet.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this agenda item? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Turn it over to the Commission for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I had one other question of Mr. Crowe. And, and, you're all right. You're planning a six-foot solid fence.
Yes, sir.
Do you, you have no other plan, like a berm or anything? We, we did one of these one time for a collector car guy, and we gave him the permit for a fence, and he put a berm up.
No, it's a six-foot wooden.
Okay, so, you're not, you're not planning on changing anything in the middle of it to do something different on this?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. That's, thank you.
Okay. Again, I'll call for a motion on this or a decision.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the CUP 20-9.
And finding a fact?
And finding a fact.
Okay, thank you. Need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this agenda item? If not, all in favor of this agenda item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This motion carries. It'll be heard in this room on the 17th of November by the Board of County Commissioners, I believe, at 5:30. Okay, thank you. For the next, next one, we'll move on to conditional use permit 20-10. Allow an extension of existing Mountain West Tower to 65 feet with the ability to extend to 85 feet if necessary in the future. With that, I'd ask for the staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we actually have two conditional use permits, and staff's going to incorporate both presentations into one. They are both identical except for the locations. So, this is for CUP 20-10 and CUP 20-11. A conditional use permit to extend existing towers to provide broadband and telephone service. An application by Tim Meads, Mountain West Technologies. Location and zoning. CUP 20-10 is located just north of the intersection of Garbutt Road and 33 Mile Road. So, that is west of the airport. We head west of the airport. We make a right onto 33 Mile Road. There's a business there that was formerly Fabtech. It's Dragon now. And we're going to head north. And where that road now comes to a T-intersection is where this first tower is. The part, the subject parcel and all surrounding parcels are zoned urban ag. CUP 20-11 is located just north of Bessemer Bend and 12 Mile intersections. The subject parcel and all surroundings parcels are also zoned urban ag. So, here is our 33 Mile one. You can see 33 kind of comes to a T there now. It used to be a gentle curve. Now, it is a T-intersection. It's located just north of that. 2011 is located just off of 12 Mile where it intersects with Bessemer. So, you'd get to this one two different ways. You'd either go out Poison Spider to roughly the Poison Spider School, and you'd head south on 12 Mile where you'd come into the intersection of Bessemer right before that. Or, you would come off of 220 like you're headed Dalcovah, and we're going to go down Bessemer. We're going to cross the, the river there, and we're going to go up on top of the hill. And off to the north would be that other location. Again, these are both existing towers that they're requesting taller height. Any communication tower that's greater than 45 feet requires a conditional use permit. Both of these locations are currently at 45-foot height. These towers need to be extended to provide more coverage to the surrounding landowners. The application is for 65-foot tower. The staff has requested an additional 25 feet, 20 feet, for a total of 85 feet to accommodate for future needs. So, as we have seen, cell towers, communication towers continue to grow over time. And so, we're trying to save another hearing in the future and evaluate this one at an 85-foot height, knowing that right now, the plans are 65. Again, our same conditional use permit criteria. Granting the CUP will not contribute to an overburden of county services. Staffs propose finding the fact. Granting the conditional use permit will not contribute to an overburden of county services. County services and infrastructure will not be necessary for this permit. This tower will replace an existing tower. Again, these are existing towers going taller. Granting the CUP will not cause undue traffic, parking, population density, or environmental problems. Staffs propose finding the fact. The facility is unmanned and will not cause undue traffic or parking. Routine maintenance for the tower will be limited. There will be no effects to population density. Granting the CUP will not impair the use of adjacent properties or alter the character of the neighborhood. Staffs propose finding the fact. Both these towers are considered to be part of the character of the neighborhood. The request is to extend the existing tower. There will be no new impairments. Well, granting the CUP will not detrimentally affect the public health, safety, and welfare or nullify the intent of the development plan or the zoning resolution. Staffs propose finding the fact. With an approved CUP, the tower will comply with the zoning resolution, the development plan. These sites do provide coverage to residents and provide valuable E911 services. Public comment. To date, Neutrona County Department, Development Department has received no comments on these proposals. Both applications had letters sent to adjacent neighbors. Staffs propose motion. Staff proposes a motion and vote by the Planning Commission to recommend approval of the requested conditional use permit by the Board of County Commissioners, incorporating reference all findings of fact set forth in the staff report and this public hearing. Again, to summarize, these are existing towers that are 45 feet tall. They want to increase them up to a taller height. Staff has added another 20 feet to them. We have received no comments. There's no concerns with these locations. So, with that, I'd answer any questions the Commission may have.
No questions for me.
Jason, you, I'm a little confused. At some point, you said that they're going to extend the towers that are there. And then, at one point, you said they're going to make new ones. Are they going to do new towers?
No, these are, there's one tower there. There's going to be one tower when they're done.
Are they going to take this 45 footer down and put up an 85? Or are they going to go up from the 45?
So, Tim is also here, but my, they use a modular-type design tower that allows them just to add sections to it. So, my initial response to him, we'll let Tim correct me, is they could go up to the 65 with the tower and base they have. I'm not so sure about an 85. Some point in the future, if they did have to go to an 85, then may, that modular design may not, may not pass structural stability at that point. But, right now, they would just be extending the 45 up to 65.
Mr. Chairman, so, they'd have to come back to you guys for a permit to take it down and rebuild it or to go up from 65 to 85?
They wouldn't have to come get zone, provided they get approval. Now, they're good, but they'll have to come get a building permit. And during that building permit process, we do look at the wind and snow loads, ice loads on a tower.
And I'm assuming, from what I've seen, they don't have an issue with 110% laydown where these are, they're kind of out there.
That's my understanding also. You know, our staff member, Trish Chavez, evaluated these, and I don't see any notes that show me any difference.
And you've mentioned these are also going to be E911 towers? Is that in their plans, or is that your plan?
It's in their plan, and I did have a conversation with Tim today about it. And the way this typically works is you, as a property owner, get internet service through Mountain West. And part of that internet service is they can connect into your telephone system, your old corded telephone system in your, in your home. And so, through that process, they can get 911 through that phone system.
Okay, because we've approved recently some new nine, some new E911 towers specifically that are not available to the public. It's just E911 stuff, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jason. With that, I'll open the public hearing on this agenda item. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item? Say again?
Oh, I was, the information that he gave is absolutely correct. Those are modular towers. They can't go up to 100.
Come on up here and talk to us.
Sure.
Your name and address, please.
Tim Meads, 3015 Cotton Creek Place here in Casper, Wyoming. What I was stating is that Jason's actually completely correct. Those towers that are currently built out there are designed to go up to 400 feet. It depends on how tall you build them as to how far out guide wires are engineered to be put in place. Those towers currently are built and engineered for a 65-foot design. If we were to move them to an 85-foot design, we would just add additional guide wires to spread that out so that you have the proper support for that tower. But, as it stands right now, any towers that we build, we initially put the engineering forth for 65-foot and standard wind loading for the equipment that we put in place. In regards to the E911 services, he's absolutely correct as well. So, E911 is just electronic 911. It's coming over a digital signal. If a user subscribes to our service, they can register for E911 services. Therefore, their location of their home is in the database for 911 and can be dispatched based on a telephone call placed to that facility.
Okay. Any questions for the gentleman? Okay, thank you, Tim.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this agenda item? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Turn it over to the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, do you want two motions, one for each?
We have to do two, don't we?
We need two, one for each.
Yep.
Okay.
That's why I didn't try to combine them. We've been down this road once before.
That's what I thought. So, you wanted?
We'll do two.
We'll do one? Can we do two together?
No. We'll do one at a time.
Mr. Chairman. I move a motion and vote by the Planning and Zoning Commission to recommend approval of the requested conditional use permit, CUP 20-10, by the Board of County Commissioners and incorporate by reference all findings of fact set forth herein and made a part hereof.
I'll second. Okay, you have a second. Is there any further discussion on this agenda item? If not, all in favor of this agenda item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This agenda item passed. This one will be heard in this room at 5:30 on the 17th of November by the Board of County Commissioners. With that, I'll open up the agenda item. Conditional use permit 20-11, which is basically the same as, as the previous agenda item with the difference of its address. This tower is located north of the intersection of Bessemer Road and 12 Mile Road. We've already had staff input on this. So, with that, I'd?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to have a vote by the Planning and Zoning Commission to recommend approval of the requested conditional use permit by the Board of County Commissioners and incorporate, of CUP 20-11, and incorporate by reference all findings of fact set forth herein and made a part hereof.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This will also be heard in this room at 5:30 on the 17th of November by the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, Tim. With that, we'll move on to the last, or the next agenda item, which is ZC 20-4. A request to change the zoning district classification from urban mixed residential to rural residential for three lots in the Slager subdivision. With that, I'd ask for the staff report, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. ZC 20-4 is a request for a zone change, an application by Nancy Vermillion, to change the zoning district classification from UMR to RR1 for three lots in the Slager subdivision. Location and zoning. We're west of Casper. We're going to go past the airport, and instead of turning at Drag...
And instead of turning at Dragon onto Thirty-three, we're going to make a left and we're going to go south on Ten Mile Road. We're going to go down to Holland Road. We're going to hang a right, so we're going to be headed west. And then we're going to intersect with Slogger. And you can see the three lots highlighted there. If memory recalls, this board did approve a zone change just to the south of this a few meetings back. Again, it was for the same reasons. It became evident to the property owners that light agricultural was not a permitted use, but rather a conditional use. The neighborhoods got together and, and came forward before us. And we did change the zoning and the county commissioners approved that further there to the south. But this is an extension of that same premise, the same neighborhood. The one exception is, let's see here, if I can come, you'll see there that tan color went to RR1, and it was UMR previous. This application is the top three lots. You'll notice there'll be some topic here that there is a chunk there of UMR that is not part of this zone change, was not part of the last zone change. I did go out and speak to that property owner. They are aware of the situation and their decision to stay UMR is intentional at this point. I, I did point out some pros and cons associated with the zone change. And as of tonight's meeting, they, they did not want to be part of the zone change. They wanted to stay UMR. That would be allowed. That's not considered a spot zone. The minimum zone district size is six acres. They have just under ten acres with their lot. So this is all perfectly permissible in that regard. The application that's really before us tonight is these three lots further to the north. And that's the application we're going to hear tonight. You can see the surrounding zoning is urban ag. There is some light industrial as we get further to the east. That's the gray. But predominantly around this is urban ag. So there are three owners part of the zone change request tonight that we're considering. According to the landowners in this area, the residents have always kept agricultural or agricultural and 4-H animals. Due to a recent request for zoning, the residents were informed that animals and 4-H was not permitted in UMR. It's a conditional use. It was agreed that the zone change would comply with the development plan and achieve the landowner's goal of allowing animals and 4-H activities. The Planning Commission and B.O.C.C. recently approved a similar zone change. That was sixteen lots south of this request. This is looking north at the, the subject properties. This is Slogger Road here. This is looking to the northeast. As you can see, it's a typical rural subdivision in Natrona County. This is looking south. The Planning Commission and Board shall require that the applicant provide evidence of the proposed zone change will meet at least one of the following criteria. So they, we have our six criteria that are in our zoning resolution. The applicant is seeking the zone change under criteria three. And again, in the application, there's a full explanation. The land may have been rezoned to urban mixed residential as a mistake. All properties in the Slogger subdivision and the subsequent lot splits have historically been used for and are currently being used as rural residential properties, including the housing and raising of livestock and horses. The property owners would like to legally enjoy the use of their land. Staff's finding the twenty-sixteen development plan for this area is to maintain agricultural lands and county roads. The zone change will increase the maximum lot size for the area and support the development plan with low-density residential development. Again, that second line there, the UMR would allow you, I believe, to split down to a two-acre lot. That would not be supported by our development plan. Rural residential would be in line with our development plan of one unit per five acres. So this zone change is, is headed toward and will be compliant with our development plan. The minimum district size is fifteen acres in rural residential. The applicant is requesting above the minimum acreage and would not be considered a spot zone. Public comment, as of tonight's meeting, no comments have been received. The Development Department notified thirty-four property owners within one mile. Proposed motion, staff proposes a motion and vote by the Planning Commission to recommend approval by the Board of County Commissioners on the proposed zone change from UMR to rural residential one. Staff also recommends the motion incorporate by reference the findings of fact set forth in the staff report in this public hearing. Again, this is a, what I would call a typical rural Natrona County subdivision. You go out there, you find folks that do have animals. We have not had code enforcement cases out there. So code enforcement has not been out there, and this disparity was not, not noticed that they're not allowed to have animals. It was a sale of a lot further to the south that really started the neighborhood coming to light that light agricultural was not permitted without a conditional use permit. And so again, with the past one and with this one, everybody on the application is in favor. And with that, I'd answer any questions the commission may have.
Read. No questions. Ma'am? No questions. Bob?
No.
Thank you, Jason. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item? Don't be bashful.
I'm Nancy Vermillion at three-four-six-eight Slogger Road. It has recently come to my attention that the zoning for our subdivision was at some time changed without notice, possibly in the year two thousand, to urban mixed residential. Previously, the zoning was primary, your rural mixed, which defined light agriculture as accepted use. UMR does not allow any agricultural use, and I believe that the zoning should have been changed to RR1 at that point. And so I'm just asking for this correction to be made.
I agree.
Okay. Any questions for Nancy?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this agenda item? With that, I'll close the public hearing, turn it over to the commission for the motion.
Motion to approve ZZ, ZC twenty-four, proposed zone change from urban mixed residential to rural residential one, and incorporate the findings of fact as set forth in the documents.
Second. We've been here. We were just south of here a while back.
I know. All in favor of this item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This motion carries. It'll be heard in this room on the seventeenth day of November at five-thirty by the Board of County Commissioners, and thank you. With that, we'll move on to the last agenda item that we have here, and I'm not real sure. We have some strange circumstances here, so I'm going to have to turn it over to Jason. Do I need to identify this, Charmaine?
Okay. The next agenda item is PS twenty-one. It's a request for approval of a final plat of mountain acre subdivision. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jason or staff.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, PS twenty-one is a major subdivision up on the mountain, an application by Camille Lehman. Let me get to a map here. So here is the, the highlighted sub, proposed subdivision. You'll see in your packet, this is a proposed seven-lot subdivision. The issue that has came up that we need to iron out is the county road. So the county attorney reviewed previous documentation. And if you look at Hogodon Road, so we're going to go up on the mountain, we're going to take a right like we're headed to Hogodon. Before Hogodon, we're going to catch K-two Road. K-two Road then heads to the south. And K-two Road goes down, if you can follow that. If you can't, I can grab a pointer and try to show you. But K-two Road comes down, and then it actually comes across the proposed subdivision. And then it connects then with Archer Range Road back to Micro. So during our research, we found that that, that line right there is in fact a dedicated road. And the proposed subdivision does not address that discrepancy. So we want to go back with the applicant, work that, iron that out. That is a dedicated public road, we believe. And so we need to work with the applicant on ironing that, that portion out. So staff would recommend that we table this item so that we can work with the applicant to address the public road that goes through their subdivision.
I'm not sure what that route is.
That road's back up here. Hold on a minute, Jason. See?
You have a pointer?
We need a yardstick.
No, you just need to be taller. About eight feet would work.
So right here is the-
Public road, okay.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I think, I think it's this one. I kind of-
The motion would be then to table this agenda item until staff resolves the issue?
Well, you can just table it without any conditions.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move table PS twenty-one.
I'll second it. Got a motion and a second. With that, all in favor of this agenda, or this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This agenda item is tabled pending further investigation by staff. So any of you that came to hear this, we're going to put it off for a little while till this gets settled.
So yeah, get a hold of Camille and we'll sit down and work it out. You give us this and we'll work it out. Come get a hold of some work down.
Gentlemen, my name is Camille Mon and I am the owner of the subdivision that we have conducted all the necessary water, visceral three wells. We have JHKC engineering subdividing, so we have all the corners in place. The DEQ has approved, and we have all the necessary water samples. The, the percolation of, on several lots is good. I've been living on a mountain for about sixteen years now, and you know, I want to share this beautiful mountain with some others. So that's why I decided to subdivide this place property and, and a five acres legal lot. We, with that Archer Range Road, I just want to mention that that is also a county road. And I was asking if we can plow that road to get to this prop, to my property. And I've been told that we cannot because the road is being shut at Micro Road in the winter, and it's not plowed. So if I allow that road that goes through my property be a county road, am I closing myself to get, or the new future owners to the property because it's not going, they aren't going to be able to plow it? Because if county road's not going to plow it, the landowners has to. So that's my only concern.
Now, who can answer that? You'll have to deal with the Planning Department on that and Road and Bridge.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about the delay.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I'm Judy Threed and I own the property adjacent to this.
Get up there to the mic so we can hear you.
I'm Judy Threed and I own the property adjacent to this. I would really like to know about the roads as well. I have been told that that K-two road that comes past the tower turns into Kilmer Road, and then it turns into Jackson County, or Jackson Canyon Road. And so my, that road on my property that goes to his property would then be a private road. And that's what I've been told since my parents built up there on Van Horn's property. We had only some acres. I'm opposed to anybody trying to use that road as a public access to what he's proposing to do.
Yeah, any questions on the road? You'll have to deal with the-
I know. I just wanted you all to know that.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Are we doing a public comment?
Thank you for taking the time. My name is Gary Lever, one-on-one, East Second Street, Casper. I'm also an adjacent property owner. I touch Camille's property in two areas. Have been talking with Jason and Trish about correcting the road issue up there. One of my issues is there are plenty of people going south on K-two Road that hooks up ultimately to Crooked Pine Road that don't have access on that road also. So my understanding was that when Judy did her subdivision, that she dedicated that portion of the road to the public.
I did not dedicate anything to anybody.
I would have to look at the plat.
Yeah, well, it says dedicated to the public on the plat. So the issue of whether that can be a private road or not is something that I'm sure that Jason had a group. But anyway, I'm in favor of somebody developing a nice subdivision up there. It has water. It has power. It's attractive land, and I hope that Jason and Trish can figure out the county road issue up there for everybody's benefit.
Got you. Thank you. Yep, this will be heard again after that item is settled in this room, just like it's going on right now. So with that, we're at the public comment. Anything, anything for the good of the order, anything somebody'd like to bring up? If not-
I move adjourn.
The motion do adjourn.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're going home. Thank you for coming. Did everybody sign in in the back on the tablet back there?